As Kitty told me all the time, it's tough in your mind.
Yes.
Yeah.
I bet her hopes.
Bring up the whole place over.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Well, yeah.
You do need four seconds.
I'm doing all this.
You know, you need some.
Yeah.
It's a little jarring.
Yeah.
She has a fine attitude.
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 Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
Morning.
Good 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 morning.
I would like to call the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Today is November fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. And first order of business is a salute to the flag. Mr. La Boy, would you be so kind to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. La Boy. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Kitty Jarman, Chair, present. Bob Lucy, Vice Chair.
Here.
Marsha Burke Bigler.
Here.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman is absent. County Manager, John Slaughter.
Present.
Assistant Deputy District Attorney, David Watzgeal.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. Do you have a form of manager?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, please read item three.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person and may contain matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual acting items with comments limited to three minutes per person and comments are to be limited to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, please call public comment.
We have one person signed in for public comment, Elise Weatherly.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly. I think I'm here for an exit interview, if you will. I know I've been trying for months to get you guys to please let Mark Neal go back into the Jennings Youth Center so that we could, I know, help those kids. And all I'm seeing is kind of a back and forth thing. I can't get a true answer. So exit interviews are by human resources people and basically they want to hear what you have to say on your way out. So what I wanted to read to you was something that we have in our constitution. It says that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, liberty and pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men deriving their powers from the consent of the governed. And now, I know the Bible uses the term "men" to indicate humanity, so I'm not going to narrow it down to white men only. But I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and what my happiness is, is the absolute truth. It's the truth. And I'm striving to tell it and I'm trying to believe it and I'm trying to deliver it. I'm a triad, I'm a walking testimony of the power of God, but I'm having a hard time getting people to listen. And I think the reason is because everybody bases their happiness on their own beliefs, whether it's lies or not. Now, my life before was a myriad of lies. I would tell men lies for any reason that I wanted, just to get my own agenda. And I got changed and I'm a different person now. I'm not that same person. And what I want to do is get back into that youth center to tell these kids they can be different people. We have a nation that's based on laws. You know what those laws are? They're laws of love. And that's not my primary thing. Do I love you guys? I hope so. I want to more than anything. The law of love is a gospel of peace. And so what I would like to do is work together on these things, not me coming in here and saying, "I'm right and you're wrong," because that's not what this is about. This is about doing good for other people. This is about, there's a division going on and it's not between Democrats and Republicans. It's not between men and women. It's not between white and black. It's between what's true and what's not. Who loves the truth and who doesn't love the truth? I would like the truth, if that's okay with you. What I fear is that eventually in this nation, and I don't know where the three-minute thing is, just let me know when it's time. I have a feeling that eventually telling the truth in and of itself is going to be a crime because it's going to be construed as a hate crime. If I tell you the truth, if I tell you you're going into a building that's burning, but it doesn't seem politically correct or right, and I don't tell you that you're going into a burning building, then I'm responsible for that. Please let us get back in there and tell those kids what the truth is. Now, my life is a foundation of accounting, of truth, it's accountability. So we're talking about a government that will hold people accountable, that will help people, but will also base it on the fact that when you work, you get to hate.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there further public comment?
That was all, Madam Chair.
All right, I'll bring us back to the board. Mr. Manager.
Item four, Commissioner and County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates, requests for information on topics for future agendas.
Do you have any announcements?
I do. I know there's some interest in the community regarding next steps in the, what appear on the ballot as WC one, the school district sales tax. The commission, the commission will be, there's three steps in the commission enacting the sales tax. It's enacted through ordinance. The first step is request that the ordinance be drafted and that will appear on the agenda on November twenty-ninth. In the subsequent first reading and second reading. So I just wanted to, I know the school district's holding a meeting today regarding this topic. We've communicated with the school district. We're also communicating with the state on state part of taxation to get this process as smooth as possible and get it underway.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair, Marsha.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing that was brought up previously in our fire commissioners meeting was the discussion about reverse nine-one-one with our emergency management system. I know that you had made that comment, that that is something through the health district. But I'd also like to get a presentation from our staff in regards to our role with Aaron Kinniston and emergency management and where we, what, how can we improve that? Or what, how does that really work with cell phones these days and the entire process? So if I can get a presentation on that, I would appreciate that. Also, in regards to the Little Valley Fire, I would like to know, have a presentation from the assessor in regards to the assessment on these properties and what the, how the fire affected these properties because eighty-five percent of those properties were, or eighty-five percent of the fire was public and private property. And so I would like to get a presentation from the assessor about that. And that's all I have at this time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Burke Bigler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to call, to ask for a callback of an issue related to the relocation of the, I believe it's the C E I Medical Marijuana Establishment so that we can get a report on where it is and what's happening with that facility and have they been able to find another location? And because we, we do have a responsibility to follow up with this company and so I'd like to ask for that to be brought back to an agenda as soon as possible.
Great. Commissioner.
Nothing, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, I too would like this to be expedited, Mr. Manager, in terms of the MME in Spanish Springs and the staff work that's been done. We said we were going to do everything we could to accommodate them to, for that, to that region. And so that, I'd rather, I'd like to see that done before the end of this calendar year. Anything else? All right, Mr. Manager, item number five.
Item five is Declaration of Canvas Vote in Order for Two Thousand and Sixteen General Election. And Madam Clerk, our representative voters is here to present this item.
A little different environment we have here today. For the record, the man cutler, register our voters. I'd like to start out by just noting that without a doubt, this has been the most challenging election year that I've experienced in the twenty-seven that I've been here. A lot going on in addition to the election and maybe some of these numbers that I'd like to share with you can kind of display that. Between September first and November first of this year, our department processed nearly fifty-one thousand voter registration-related transactions. That's extraordinary in my mind. For the election, we had a total registered number of voters of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-one. That's nearly forty thousand more people than we had in the two thousand and fourteen general election. As you can see, our number of Democratic voters and Republican voters are still holding very similar to one another, where the increase seems to be happening is still in the nonpartisan category. And right now, we've got, you know, over twenty-seven percent of those registered are nonpartisan. Now, of those who voted in this election, sixty-two percent voted early. I think that's a tremendous statement. It speaks greatly to the work of our poll workers who work really voting for us. Nine percent voted by absentee and twenty-nine percent voted on election day for a total turnout of seventy-nine percent. But more importantly, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-seven people voted in this election. That's over twenty thousand more than we have ever had in a single election in Washington County before. We utilized two-hundred-and-twenty-five voting machines for early voting and hired a hundred-and-forty early voting workers. For election day, we used over a thousand touchscreen voting machines and nearly seven hundred poll workers. We had forty-five county employees that worked at the polls. We had eight who worked in the field from Technology Services as technical rovers and runners for us. And we had four county employees who volunteered in our election day call center. We had twenty-three early voting locations that handled almost a hundred-and-thirty thousand registered voters. And by comparison, we had eighty-six election day polling places that handled about sixty-two thousand voters. That's a point that I'll want to bring home to you again in another meeting to talk about that comparison some. We did supply a kids' vote ballot this time so that the kids would have a little something to do while their parents were voting. And without a doubt, that was the most popular piece of equipment that we sent out. They disappeared quickly. So the big question, why the delay in reporting results on election night? Three, three little reasons, as I mentioned here. Three cartridges from voting machines wouldn't upload on election night. The traditional method of retrieving the information after something like that happens is getting the information directly off the hard drive of the voting machine. In this case, that didn't really want to work either. So fortunately, we had the city clerks from Reno and Sparks, both present on election evening with us. And we utilized their talents as well as Paul Burr from Technology Services. And we read the results directly from the V V pat tape, which is redundancy number three. Now, this was done at two AM with, you know, after a very long day, with ten people staring at the three of them trying to do this. They did an extraordinary job and got all the information put in so we could report the final result on election night. After that, on Wednesday and Thursday last week, we consulted with Dominion Voting. They reviewed our database to make sure everything was still as it should be and showed us how to go ahead and input those votes directly into the system because that hadn't been done yet. And we did that and we still came up with the same exact result. So I am forever grateful for those three people handling that process for us. I think it's certainly better that, that they participated as opposed to us doing that. We were extremely grateful for their accuracy and, and that's all been resolved now and we are moving on with a complete tally. So post-election activities, we've already processed the provisional ballots. We had over a thousand this time. Six-hundred-and-twenty-seven of those were able to be counted. Our accuracy certification board completed the post-election audit last Friday. We found no unexplained errors during the reconciliation process. The final abstract of votes is on the CDs that have been supplied in your packets and voting history has been posted. Now, our certification board is mandated by N R S. It's a team of three citizens who serve and observe voting equipment testing. They serve as our eyes and ears in the field and they assist with a number of our other processes. This board also runs the post-election V V pat audit, which really is the ultimate test of voting machine accuracy. And those V V pat tapes ultimately is what helped us achieve success for the election. The V V pat audit, I know I've explained before, so I'll be brief. They scan each set of votes for each voter on selected V V pat tapes, which are chosen at random by the certification board. There's a requirement of two percent, which meant twenty-seven voting machines had their, their tapes scanned this time for accuracy. And they even go so far as to pull out two separate sets of votes to make sure that the barcode reflects what's actually printed on the tape. No errors were found this time and they never have been before either. Our certification board members are Greg Newwiler. If you could stand, Greg, please. The Chair of the Board, Bob La Boy. Bob La Boy, who will be retiring after this election, but whose service we greatly appreciate. And former Commissioner Jean Stos.
Greg Dothan.
Yes. So, and the one person not able to be with us today is Steve Davidek, who volunteers, and he's the IT manager from the City of Sparks. And he's participated on and off with this process for over thirty years. So there's a great deal of experience here and it's quite obvious with every election cycle that there is no substitute for that experience. I know I'm supposed to keep it brief, but they did each want to say a little something very quickly. So if you want to go ahead, come on.
Absolutely, Mr. Newwiler. You could state your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm Greg Newwiler. I'm Chair of this election certification board. I want to congratulate Commissioner Hartung and Burke Bigler. I've seen your names seventy-five thousand times in the last two weeks. Just glad you're both here because I am so excited. No, really. One of the things I want to comment on, and Jean wants to make a comment too, is this year, one of the best things we got to do is go out to the Pyramid Lake Pioneer Tribe. You know, they filed that last minute lawsuit, caused nothing but a tsunami through all of the staff here at Washington County. So Luan asked me to go out there and spend the day with them because the training is like, I make the analogy, it's like watching your parents drive for fifteen years and then you go get your driver's license and can't do it. So the training is excellent, we're going to talk about that, but the hands-on was something. And they, I'm telling you, they were the proudest bunch. They took pictures with the machines after they were closed, actually. They all were there, all of the tribe was there the entire time for all of, all of the first day. We had Channel Four News. We had a Democrat from Voter Protection. We had the attorney and his legal aide, who happens to be his wife, who filed the suit on behalf of Walker Lake Tribe and the Pyramid Lake Tribe. We had the representative from the National Coalition of Indian Affairs. We had the tribe president and we, they, just on that day alone, they had fifty-three people vote. They only had eighty-nine vote totally in the primary. They loved it. We even had a line a couple of times. It's the best thing we ever get out there, seriously. The other thing Luan did this time for the certification board, because we are getting older. I am the youngest on the certification board. Anyway, but not the most experienced. These two characters seriously irritate me. Anyway, this is what Luan created for us. This is a binder for us that has all the N R S statutes in it, the things about petitioners. She assigned us the sites for early voting so we'd make sure we did good coverage, especially at this election. And I'm telling you, it worked great, fantastic. None of this board, you need two people replace each one of these people on this staff. So I'm just proud to be part of the team. I'm proud to be the chairman of it. And now I'd like Bob and Jean to come talk about what they'd like to do or say.
I'm not so old that I can say.
No, I didn't say you're old. I'm actually twenty-nine for clarification.
Yeah, you're looking great.
I'm Bob La Boy. I'm on certification board. This is Jean Stos. She, we've been on this board for eighteen years. Anyway, it's been a very interesting thing that's happened over the years and it's grown tremendously. But we also, and I think two places I went on election day were the Sky Peaks and, and the San Rafael Ranch voting places. And in both places, it was interesting that the observers mentioned they thought that our people were very well-trained and they did a wonderful job. And they brought it up by themselves. I didn't say, I didn't ask them, they just brought up themselves. So I think for Heather Carmen, it's a feather in her cap. She did a great job training these people.
Well, I agree with that. I'm Jean Stos. And in all the places I went vote during early voting and on election day, they ran smoothly. Everybody was happy. The poll workers were happy, the voters were happy, and the observers who came from Portland, Seattle, the Bay Area, Napa Valley, were all happy too. They were very impressed. And again, I agree that Heather must have done a heck of a job teaching those people. So would you please stand up so we can?
Before you, before we actually do the canvas of the vote, please don't leave, more members, because we would love to take a picture with you for posteries since, Mr. La Boy, you said you are quitting on us.
Yes. Sorry to do that.
No, we appreciate your eighteen years, trust me.
Yes, we do. Very much agree. Very agree. And I do have to, I do have to echo momentarily what they were saying about the comments coming from the observers. I, I got nothing but compliments on our poll workers and, and that does reflect directly back to Heather and her team as far as the training that they were provided with. So we're, we're quite proud of those good comments that we got from them. In the immediate future, we received a petition on election day. The timing was just wonderful. And so we'll be verifying that.
What petition is it?
The petition is for automatic voter registration, which I believe would happen through the Department of Motor Vehicles. So that's on our plate at the moment. I have unofficially been notified that we will be having a recount in Assembly District Thirty-One.
That's, it's already been requested?
It has not.
Okay.
It's, I've unofficially been notified of that, but fully expecting it. They're asking for some information that I'll provide to them directly after this canvas is complete.
Okay.
So, so we're expecting that. It's a margin of thirty-eight votes and it will require a separate canvas when the time comes that it's completed. We are trying to prepare a little bit ahead of time for that because the timeframe could run right into Thanksgiving if we're not careful. So another thing that's on our plate is the over ten thousand documents that we received back from the polls, voter updates, registrations, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of that coming our way too. Now, real briefly, I, I do want to introduce staff again because I, I feel it's extremely important that they are all recognized. Please stand and remain standing when I call your name. Deanna Spicula is our Assistant Register our Voters. Kate Saleem is the Equipment Expert and Supply Manager. Heather Carmen is our Poll Worker Recruiter and Trainer. Sarah War is our Absent Ballot Coordinator. John Brown is our Front Office and Correspondence Manager. John Brown is our Front Office and Correspondence Manager. And Brian Takamoto is our Technology Services Representative. Because of these... It's because of these six people standing here, the two-hundred-and-ten-thousand people got to cast a vote in this election, so I'm very proud of them.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Just a couple of folks I'd like to thank quickly. I think historically, we rarely recognize the work that the District Attorney's Office does for us, and we put them to work a little bit more this time than we have in past years. But their support is very much appreciated. Herb Kaplan is our assigned representative, and I did lean on him a lot for advice and consultation and, you know, a tier here or there. So, I appreciate his support very much. Paul Leparelli and Michael Large also participated in supporting us, and we appreciate what they do for the county as a whole. There were fifty-seven county employees who volunteered on Election Day, and of course, those need to be recognized, who had to stay behind to keep the offices functioning and Washoe County business going on as normal. The Washoe County Sheriff's Office, I cannot tell you how impressed I am with the level of professionalism that comes from these people. Every interaction we had with them was accurate, it was exact, they had a plan for everything, and we appreciate their support as well. The county management and the communication teams also deserve extra credit for their assistance and the support they give us during the elections like that. And of course, there wouldn't be an election if we didn't have our dedicated poll workers. There's just a few of them on the screen here, but there were nearly eight hundred that participated in this election for us. It's a huge task to recruit and train them, but it got done, things went well, and we are quite proud of all of these people who share this responsibility with us. So, with that, I thank you, and ask if there's any questions.
Vice Chair, listen.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Ms. Cutler, you and your staff have done a phenomenal job. I mean, it's impressive to me to see seventy-nine percent of our registered voters turn up for vote. That is, by all way, absolutely historic today, and I think that's something to be recognized, and that your staff did a phenomenal job with that capacity of vote to field that. Now, I have a few questions in regards, there has been some discussion with the last election in regards to Clark County. They had an issue, a situation in one of their locations where the polling location stayed open later, and there was some controversy and reverse for why that location stayed open later than others. I would like to try to get some clarification in regards to, do we have, you know, what is our protocol in place when people get in the line? Our job is to allow those people once they're in line to vote.
Correct.
At the closing of that polling location, do we have people that stop that line? What is the protocols in place in regards to that? And then, you know, what would you, what would you do individually as our risk for our voters to keep our system running smoothly?
Well, excuse me, there was that issue in Clark County that you mentioned. Typically, what we do is simply send someone to the end of the line to inform anyone who comes up that voting has closed. There were a couple of requests made during that last week of early voting for us to extend the hours at a couple of our locations. And in consultation with Herb from the District Attorney's Office, we decided that that was something that we shouldn't do here in Washoe County, since the information about opening hours and so on had already been published. So, we chose not to do that. But of course, as you mentioned, anyone who's in line at closing time is allowed to vote, no matter if the line is three blocks long.
Right.
So...
Okay, great. And I think that we did a great job doing, adhering to our posted times and maintaining that. So, you know, thank you to your staff, because it does reflect, that was an incident that did reflect nationally. And so, we want to make sure that we have the proper protocols in place, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burke Pickler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to go on record, thank you very much. It was a very well-run election, and I know you guys worked really hard, and I appreciate everything you all have done. But I am concerned about our voting machines, and so I think it's time for us to maybe look at what we're going, what's the future going to look like. This is the second time that we've had, the last election, we had some issues. Fortunately, you've got a great team, we've been able to resolve it and move on. But the time is coming where these voting machines are not going to be able to service us. I served as the Chairman of the Committee that selected these voting machines, and let me tell you, that was a long time ago. So, these machines have been around for a long time. Been around for a long time, and I would like to go on record as one of the, as I assure all the rest of the Commissioners to feel, that we need to start looking at what are we going to do now and upgrade our voting system. So, thank you, Luanne, for everything you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner. In fact, I have a CIP request going in, so we'll be talking about that.
Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate you and your staff. What an amazing job. Just every time an issue would come up, you guys would roll with the punches, figure out how to solve the problems quickly, thinking on your feet constantly. Everybody did just a phenomenal job. I wanted to recognize, and this was just, I happened to run across this in a serendipitous fashion. I myself voted here, but my wife voted at the Scoleris on Pyramid Way, and they were handing out certificates for first-time voters. One of their, one of your poll workers decided that he was going to make a certificate, and the person, those people who came up that were first-time voters, he gave them a little printed certificate. It's the same as a sticker that, you know, I voted early. I mean, I thought it was very innovative, and I thought it was a really clever idea, and while I was standing there waiting for my wife, they gave a certificate to a young lady, and she was elated. She thought it was very cool that we were recognizing her for voting for the very first time. And I just, I wanted to recognize, his name was Bob Fuller, and he did a great job. Not that everybody didn't do a great job, but I thought that that was just an innovative idea.
It is, Commissioner, a great idea, and we've actually had one or two other poll workers suggest the same thing. It just kind of, again, shows you the level of dedication of those folks out in the field. That's certainly something that we can do, and this is something that they thought of. So, we appreciate that, and we intend to take it and run with it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I echo and commend all of the staff and our board members, and the communication staff, and the manager, and the Sheriff's Office, and, you know, the whole team had to come together to make this work. With the tone of this presidential election, to be perfectly frank, I had serious concerns about poll workers and bringing in the cartridges, and I was proud to be pleasantly surprised that it went very smoothly, and that really, this is, this is a statement of that that's how a democracy works, with a peaceful transition of power, and not intimidation tactics, et cetera, and the people's voices were heard. And so, I got to tell the three board members, without you, democracy wouldn't happen in Washoe County. There would be no checks and balances, and really no way to trust or believe that the counting was accurate, objective, and unbiased. So, I thank you so much for that. You are true patriots and heroes and heroines.
Thank you.
So, let's do a vote. Let's canvas the vote, and then, yes, Mr. Wattsbyall.
Madam Chair, if I may, Dave Wattsbyall with the Washoe County District Attorney's Office. The board item before you today is for the Canvas of the Vote pursuant to Nevada revised Statutes Two Thirty-Nine Point Three Eight Seven. Once the returns from all the precincts and districts are received, the Board of County Commissioners is required to convene and canvass those returns, and it's supposed to be done within the, before the sixth working day following the election. The canvass is a review of the election results by the Board of County Commissioners. Were any errors within the election results, which were officially documented, and the official election results are declared. The Board is required to note separately any clerical errors that are discovered, and to document changes resulting from that discovery. Following that, then the vote can be declared as a representative of the true vote that was cast. If I could, I'd like to ask Ms. Cutler a couple of questions, and then...
Absolutely.
Ms. Cutler, has the Register of Voters had the chance to review the election results?
Yes, we have.
And were there any errors noted within the election results?
No, sir, there were not.
Were there any clerical errors that were discovered after the Canvas of the results?
No, sir.
Was there any need for a change, for any changes to the vote?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, Madam Chair, you can canvas the vote.
All right. I would entertain...
Madam Chair, I would move to approve that the Declaration of Canvas of the Vote and Order of Twenty-Sixteen Election.
I will second that. Any further discussion? Congratulations, Commissioner Hartung, Commissioner Burke Pickler.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Remember, we still have business. They'll take pictures. You're a good person. Really? Yeah. Oh. Mr. La Boy.
Yes, thank you.
How are you? Good, thank you. Good to see you. How are you? How are you?
Thank you, Mr. Newwiler. You're a lovely man. You need to do stand-up. Yeah, and he's hilarious. Yes. Yes. The official show. Come on, guys, some photos. This is your modeling opportunity.
A heck of an opportunity.
We're standing, guys.
All right, we'll go in three, two, one. Get a couple more. We're good. And you all want to step?
You will be missed, Mr. La Boy. We will miss you. You stay in contact.
Oh, yeah, we'll see you. Okay.
You can't leave us. I think we should leave. Great job. All right. You're good to go. Good job. I used to see that on the news. I think we should leave. All right. You're good to go. Good job. Good job. Thank you so much for all of yours. Appreciate it. Bobby, Bobby, we're doing employees.
Employee introductions are next. Oh. Oh, Rita over here.
Okay, we're going on to our next item. Patty Cathy. Thank you.
Our next, our next item is Item Six, which is Introduction of New Washington Employees. And if you can have the employees make a line up over here, we'd ask you to come up, introduce yourself, department you're in, position you're in, and then you can come over and meet the Commissioners.
Meet the Commissioners.
Meet the Commissioners. Come on, Dad. What a privilege.
Shall we step forward just a little bit, so they don't have to walk so quick?
Sure.
Come on.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Proith, and I'm with the Washoe County Department of Social Services. My position is Educational Liaison, working with the foster care program between our school district and social services, and many other wonderful agencies in our community. So, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
And thank you for your contributions. Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations, welcome.
Hi, good morning. I'm Megan Sizil, Community Services Department with Capital Projects, as a project manager.
Wow. Congratulations. Good morning. Thank you. I am Tracy Box, I work with Animal Services as a relative. Wonderful. We go on, we need you, thanks. It's my favorite department. Thank you.
Good morning, Nineteen is Sloan, I'm with Washoe County Library, and the library assisted to the downtown branch.
Congratulations, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Lehigh, and I work at the District Attorney's Office as a Valance Support Specialist.
Congratulations, thank you.
Welcome aboard. Hi, my name is Tony Lopez. I'm at the Assessor's Office in Personal Property Division, and I'm Office Assistant Three.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Follow your appointment.
Welcome. Let me just say, congratulations, welcome aboard, and may you have a very long and fruitful career here at Washoe County. We're proud of you. Madam Chair. Yes, before we get started again, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize that the Sheriff Chuck Allen is sitting in the audience, and I see that he's participating in No Shave November.
Miss Bam, I am.
And I just thought it was important to point that out. Thank you, thank you, you're right. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, next item is Item Seven, which is Presentation of Excellence in Public Service Certificates. Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and professional development of all employees administered by the Human Resources Department. Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. The completion of these courses over a two-year period demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement in the Washoe County's journey of excellence. And today, we are very pleased to recognize that commitment. Our first recipient is Nikki Berry. Nikki is Director of Human Resources Organizational Development for District Court, and has completed the Essentials of SAP for HR Reps Certificate Program. Our next recipient is Lori Griffey, Administrative Assistant One for the Health District, and Lori has completed the Essentials of SAP for HR Reps Certificate Program. And Anne Stoll Thompson, Payroll Supervisor for the Comptroller, has completed the Essentials of SAP for HR Reps. And next is Tereke Babion. Tereke is Administrative Assistant for the Sheriff's Office and has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Program. Quite a few today.
Wonderful to see.
It is. Tracy Burns, Appraiser Two for the Assessor's Office. Tracy has completed the Essentials of High Performing Teams Certificate Program. Congratulations to Tracy.
Thank you.
And Austin Dominguez, Account for the Comptroller's Office, has completed the Essentials of High Performing Teams Certificate Program.
Good job, Austin.
He raised the bar on our...
Thank you.
Suzanne Dugger, Quality Specialist Two for the Health District, has completed the Essentials of High Performing Teams. And Denise Evans, I believe Denise has completed two certificates. Volunteer Coordinator for Regional Parks and Open Space. Denise has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness and the Essentials of High Performing Teams Certificate Programs. And I know we had listed on our agenda, we had two other employees who've decided to come in January, Ada Coleman and Lisa Carr, so we can see them in January.
All right, welcome.
on actions they can take to prepare for floods, and whereas during Nevada Flood Awareness Week, local, state, and federal agencies are working together across Nevada to inform the public about the dangers of flooding, how to protect their homes and the families, and families from a flood, and plan for recovery. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November thirteenth through nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, is Nevada Flood Awareness Week, and urges all citizens to increase their awareness of the risks of flood by visiting www.nevadafloods.org and learn how you can be prepared by being informed, making a plan, and having a kit. Dated this fifteenth day of November, two thousand sixteen, signed by our Chairman, Kitty Joe.
Chairman.
And I would, I would like to also just point out this morning, during fire, they talked about, because the hillsides have been denuded, floods do not have to be, you know, down here in the basin. They can, they can be up on the hillsides where you think you're, you're high enough, but sadly, you're not. So, gentlemen, Mr. Solero, Mr. Crump, Mr. Smith, Mr. Corbridge, nice to see you. Come forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let me say just a couple quick words.
Please. Get out of the way.
For the record, Dave Solero, Director of Community Services Department. You know, it's, it's great that the Board has recognized this proclamation. I'd like to keep flood on the minds of our citizens so that they will know, will know that they will occur and that they are prepared during this, you know, during the, during the flood season. We also have a companion item that we bring forward to this Board that started last June for flash flood awareness, which is a little bit different than what we're talking about here. You know, our, our area is prone to both, and that is indeed what occurred on the Little Valley Fire, was a little bit of flash flooding. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Any else?
All right, can you get a photograph?
All right.
Please.
He makes me not realize how proactive this guy is.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, boy. Look at that.
Thank you very much. Hi, you're seeing him.
Now, hold that thing tight there.
All right. Where do you want?
Put the ladies in the middle.
Yeah.
Come on, I promise not to bite, you can come closer. Well, I promise not to bite, but...
All right, going three, two, one. Good, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
We're not biting. Yeah.
Can we have any public comment on this item?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I want to just make one quick comment, and then I'll, I'll make a motion here, but I would also like to point out that Commissioner Hartung serves as our Vice-Chair for the Regional Flood Board, and has done a phenomenal job with that board, and continues to be an advocate for floods, so I think it was fitting that he brought that declaration for, for a proclamation for it for us today. So, I move to accept the proclamation as written.
Second.
I have a motion by Lucy, a second by Hartung. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair. Sure. I, this is so wonderful, and I was so thrilled that we did this, because our staff really, really works hard on all of these different issues, and it's very traumatic for people who are caught in these floods, and our staff are always there for them, so, thank you, guys.
Yeah, I would, I'll put a little discussion in there too. I think that the Truckee Meadows flood project should come under Washoe County Community Services Department, frankly, but you've heard me...
I agree with that.
...forever.
I agree with that.
So anyways, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Kerry's unanimously. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, next item are your donations, which are under item nine, nine A through nine B three.
All right, I believe Commissioner Burke Bigler would like to recognize.
I would, Madam Chair, thank you very much. On nine A, we are accepting a monetary donation to the Washoe County Animal Services totaling seven thousand two hundred and eighty dollars for the period of July one, two sixteen, through September thirtieth, two sixteen, and this money is to be used for the humane care and treatment of sick and or injured stray, abandoned, or at-risk animals. And we can't thank this community enough for all that they do to help our poor little stray animals. Adoptions, they come forward with money all the time. In addition to this amount of money, recently, there was a fundraiser that was done for the humane, by the Humane Society, and we raised a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for stray animals at that, and so it just, this just says, this community cares about animals, and so I want to thank everybody for that. Under Sheriff's Department, we want to accept a donation in the amount of three hundred dollars from Hot August Nights. Anyone from Hot August Nights here?
Yes, there are.
Thank you, guys.
Do you want to come up? Want your photograph? Do you, what do you want to do?
Whatever you guys would like to do.
Let's do a photograph, since you've sat through this very exciting meeting to get to this point. Let's do that.
And, and so to, it's from the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for the Citizens Core Program, which includes funds to use, food purchased, and other things that are necessary. Thank you so much, let's do that picture.
Mike, Mr. McQuarren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Big foot tip.
Me too.
All right. Shout out to John Canton.
Thanks for being here.
Hi, John Canton.
I'm standing, I have to stand in a minute.
Long on volunteers. Charles Dusick started it.
Is it like fabulous?
I go way back.
Come on, Karen.
Our CI was...
Yeah, our CI, yeah.
We'll get you in the middle here. We're good. Hop in the middle.
So, we'll tweak this out, guys, so you're gonna get...
Yeah, that's why, we're gonna do two.
Hot August Night.
Exactly for that reason. Here we go, in three, two, one. One more.
Is there a phone? Let us get it back from them.
All right, here we go, three, two, one. Thank you very much, Ray.
Thank you. I love Hot August Nights, it's so much fun.
Yeah, we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Hope you've got a helicopter.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
All right.
Want to continue, Madam Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We also are accepting a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars for, from the Great Reno Balloon Race, to the Washington Sheriff's Office, again, to the Citizens Core Program, including funds that are used to be purchased. Is there anybody from the... Okay, we will move on then. We are accepting a donation of H U one H Huey Helicopter. Fun, fun, fun. Estimated value is nine hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and four dollars, and no charge to the county. This is for use by the Washoe County Sheriff's Raven Department, and I understand we have two of our pilots here. Come on up and, let's get a picture.
Yes.
Come on. Come. No, he's a, he's a...
He's honorary.
He's honorary brother.
Sir, thank you. Thank you.
You could just stand on one side of that.
You know what? Be over here.
Oh, me too.
Dude, I got that covered on me.
All right, here we go, three, two, one. Got it? Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen. Enjoy your new vehicle.
Yeah. I'm gonna leave you to fend for yourself.
Nothing can go wrong.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, with that, I would ask that we accept all of these donations and make a motion that we accept the donations.
Okay, so that's for item...
Nine, nine A, nine B one, nine B two, and nine B three.
All right, is there any public comment?
No, ma'am.
I have a motion by Burke Bigler, a second by Lucy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now, that Mr. Manager, that takes us to consent.
Considered, our items ten A through ten B two.
Any questions, or anybody with a full lot of consent? Do we have public comment?
No, ma'am.
Madam Chair, move to accept.
Second. A motion by Lucy, a second by Burke Bigler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. Mr. Vice Chairman, do you have a block vote idea?
I do, Madam Chair, thank you very much. At this time, I would like to put in a block, I would make a motion to put in a block. I imagine items eleven, twelve, and thirteen is one.
Second. Okay, public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Yes, item eleven is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and Corolla Engineers, provide engineering design and construction management services for the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility chemical storage building rehabilitation in the amount of two hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. Item twelve's a recommendation to approve a C C two thirteen recertification form for the community rating system, annual recertification submitted to the National Flood Insurance Program for continued reduction in required flood insurance policy premiums for unincorporated Washoe County residents located within designated special flood hazard areas. And item thirteen's a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and Parks and Corporation to provide engineering, design, and construction management services for the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility upper wash filter upgrades in the amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
Mr. Manager, so I do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager.
Item fourteen is introduction and first reading of ordinance amending the Washoe County Code, Chapter one hundred.
Madam Clerk, would you like to perform the second reading?
This will be a first reading, Madam Chair, too.
Oh, sorry, fourteen.
For bill number one seven seven two, an ordinance amending Washoe County Code by amending Chapter one hundred of the Washoe County Code by adding thereto a new subsection one hundred point one zero two point seven exempting certain structures known as hoop houses or high tunnels from the Building Code and providing other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto.
All right, do I have somebody willing to introduce?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to introduce bill number one seven seven two and set the public hearing and second reading of the ordinance for possible adoption during the meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, now I'm opening up the public hearing portion.
Item fifteen is public hearing, and possible action to conduct a second reading about ordinance amending the Washoe County Code, Chapter one ten.
Madam Clerk, would you like to give us a ordinance number?
Certainly, Madam Chair, this will be ordinance number one five eight seven, an ordinance amending the Washoe County Code at Chapter one ten, Development Code within Article three zero six, accessory uses in structures at section one one zero point three zero six point one zero, detached accessory structures to add regulations governing the establishment of agricultural hoop houses and high tunnels, including requiring them to meet detached accessory structure placement standards and height limitations for the applicable regulatory zone, but exempting them from general lot coverage limitations within Article nine oh two definitions at section one hundred, one one zero point nine zero two point one five general definitions, to add a definition for hoop house, high tunnel, and other matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. This was previously known as bill number one seven seven one.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt ordinance number one five eight seven to affirm the forefounding of the fact of Washoe County County Commission made of September sixth, two thousand sixteen, as referred within the resolution sixteen dash fifteen, attached to staff report here.
Second. A motion by Lucy, a second by Burke Bigler. Any public comment?
No.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, I suggest that we go to the Attorney's Office that we go to item seventeen, net, which is public comment, required to or recess item sixteen.
Okay. Public comment, Madam Clerk?
We have none. Huh, couldn't find a person. All right.
Item eighteen, the Commissioner Manager's announcements.
Anything new? Lucy?
Yeah, one thing, thank you, Madam Chair, one thing that it was, sort of, that I forgot to bring up earlier, is that I would like to congratulate Judge Lydia Stiglich on her appointment to the Nevada Supreme Court by Governor Brian Sandoval. She was in the running with two, two other District Court Judges from Clark County. She was the only representative from the, from Washoe County or the northern part of the state, and was selected to serve the remainder of the term for a retiring Supreme Court Justice, so, big congratulations to her, and all the best wishes as she serves us in the Supreme Court. One other thing that we would like, I'd like to get is, basically, hopefully, the County Manager in his orders, working on this, but a discussion on who would be her replacement moving forward in that, in that appointment to her. So, I'll, I'll, Commissioner, I'd say, Madam Chair, would you like to take the appointment?
Yeah, I'll take it.
So, that's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
I love judging people. Anybody else?
I have nothing else.
Judge's not even charged.
All right, so we are going into recess, correct? For the purposes of Labor Department, we have an attorney client as well, my friends. So, Wattsby, I'll take us away.
Madam Chair, you need to have a motion to go into the, the recessions, and then at the, at the end of the session, we'll open the doors and allow the public to...
Second. A motion by Hartung, a second by Burke Bigler.
Madam Chair, just for the record, that, that will take place in the caucus room, Building A. So, the conclusion of that will, will be in the caucus room to adjourn.
Thank you. A motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in recess.
Thank you. Thing here is...
Damn. Wow.